Therefore, this meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis is absent. Judd.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Deessis is absent. Veen Bass.
Here. And with five present and two absent, there is a quorum present this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve the minutes of the June 9th council meeting. Is there such a motion? Mr. Veen Bass has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda for the council are the reports, and with humble apologies to my fellow aldermen, who probably also want to say something, the mayor's report gets to go first. And so, with the street party that we hosted on Friday night out on Kirchhoff Road, I'm just going to say, it was fantastic. I think that everybody enjoys the farmers and food trucks all the time, everybody enjoys the car show all the time, but this special way to put the two together, I think, was appreciated by everybody. And to have a pathway between the two, like we had, with a little train for kids running back and forth on one side of the street, and police vehicles from probably every freaking city in the six county area practically, I'm exaggerating, it was maybe around 25 or 30. But our neighboring communities, if you use neighboring loosely, I guess, were willing to bring their special cars out to the event, and they were all in one great big slanty parked line up the side of Kirchhoff Road. I think people really enjoyed the event, I think they were blown away, and so I offer a great big thank you to the 60th Anniversary Committee, the members of the staff who did the real heavy lifting of putting it together. It was a fabulous time. Are there other ward reports this evening? Mr. Cannon, the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just chime in along with what you just said. For years, I've been always hearing that we never throw a party, never do anything social, so I think we proved that we can do it right. I think Lori and Barry led a great charge. I think all of our division heads deserve a special thanks. Each one of the departments, from community development to public works, to fire, to police, all did a fabulous job. I think their guys and girls probably worked extra hard. I think most of the community really enjoyed it, and from my perspective, it was fabulous. Thanks.
Mr. Prina, the second word.
Well, I will just second that, but there's an encore coming this Friday night, and I know I'll take some of the thunder away from Barry, but I can't help. But if you're in Rolling Meadows on Friday night, there's an event that's going to be coming. I'll let Barry describe it, plus Saturday, and I have it on good authority, the weather is going to be excellent.
And the point is well taken, that I expect it will be a blast. Further ward reports from the other side of the dais. Then seeing none, the council meeting is now open to members of the audience for up to 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. We have five signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening. The first one is Mr. Joe Mancino. Mr. Mancino, the...
Oh, wait my time.
Fair enough. He has waived his time. Mr. Mancino is present for one of the items on the agenda this evening. He has been here before in regard to expanding the footprint of the zoning district that allows for billboards, and so, members of the council are advised that he is here in the audience this evening if there's any need to open the floor during that debate. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Richard Nathan. Mr. Nathan has been here before. Mr. Nathan, the microphone is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Rooney and Rolling Meadows aldermen. My name is Richard Nathan, CEO of RTC at 2800 Gulf Road. This is my third appearance before city council in the last month, all in regards to the formation of the Tiff District and related zoning changes that have been proposed to you. In addition, I participated in a meeting with the mayor, city staff, and representatives of Arthur Gallagher last week. I would like to be able to say in my comments tonight that we had reached an agreement that would allow me to comfortably advocate for Gallagher's proposed planned development amendment on tonight's agenda. Instead, all I can tell you is that I don't understand how it is possible that we ended up in this situation, where a city council vote on changes to a taxpayer's property would be taking place without that taxpayer's legally required approval. Let me make clear that I have never wanted to stop the Gallagher development. I still don't. Rather, I've wanted to reach a position where I can support it, and I'm not yet there. The meeting last Thursday was very helpful to learn more about the project, and I want to thank Mayor Rooney and the city staff for taking the time to participate. As I expressed two weeks ago, my preference would be for you to defer tonight's vote to ensure the clarity that everyone should be seeking, but I appreciate your desire to keep the ball rolling, which the mayor commented on at the mayor, at the June 9th meeting and last Thursday. However, please know that our concerns are not resolved, and I respectfully ask that after tonight, you support and encourage meaningful discussions between the parties that reflect not only our property rights, but the recognition that the substantial investment that Rolling Meadows is making in one property will, and I repeat will, detract from the appearance and value of other properties in our planned development. I have also previously commented that I'm happy to know that our community and business park will soon be more vibrant, but I also want to know that the city will support my reasonable position, in that of Jerry Crawford of 2900 Gulf Road, that our property rights have been abridged, and that we will be impacted by the changes that you have before you tonight. Let's all take a moment to remember that the Meadows Corporate Center was built as a planned development, with pieces and parts that are intertwined, especially the infrastructure, drainage, parking, and roadways. It is unfortunate that this wasn't all considered earlier in the process, but it can at least be somewhat rectified with your support for continued meaningful discussions and actions with Gallagher. Thank you for your ongoing consideration of our concerns and position.
Thank you for taking the time to express your position, sir. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Ms. Kara Richardson. You have the microphone for a time not to exceed five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kara Richardson, and I'm with Arthur J. Gallagher and Co., located in Itasca, but soon to be located in Rolling Meadows. I wanted to thank you all for the time that has been taken to look at the plans this evening. I also wanted to assure you that we are working to have a relationship with our neighbor that we reach some kind of an accord to meet the needs that they have, and it's simply a timing issue that they're just getting to a point of understanding what their needs are, and we're very willing and welcome to work forward with them to see if we can find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time, ma'am. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Mark Raymond. Mr. Raymond?
I'll wait my time. Thank you.
He also waives his time, but members of the council are advised that Mr. Raymond is also here. He has also been in the past, and is one of the attorneys representing Gallagher, if a discussion that requires opening the floor is necessary. And then finally, the last person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Jesus Serrato. Mr. Serrato, the microphone is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jesus Serrato, and I'm here to represent Mr. Umar Boto Padi in regards to Resolution Number 15 R. 62, in case there's any questions that arise when the vote comes.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Thank you, sir, for making us aware of that. As it's in for first reading this evening, that's not usually likely, so I'll give you that advisement, but it's good to know that you're here if necessary. Those are all the signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening for public comment. Therefore, we will close the public comment portion of this evening, and the council can continue with its business, starting with all the ordinances that are in for second reading. There are five of those ordinances this evening, and the first one is Item A. This ordinance, if adopted, would grant permission to the Lexington home site at 3245 Kirchhoff Road to erect a sign closer to their property line than the current code allows. The code requires certain setbacks, excuse me, setbacks for signs, but the width of the parkway and the bike path at this location already pushed the property line back significantly. To add the further setback requirement would severely diminish the visibility of the proposed sign. The Plan Commission considered this request and has recommended approval. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed. Item B, this ordinance, if adopted, would increase the number of A2 liquor licenses within the city, to create a license for the proposed Bulldog Ale House located at 1480 Gulf Road, the site of the former Chili's restaurant. An A2 liquor license is the most common license issued to a restaurant allowing beer, wine, and spirits. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Under discussion, I'll just take 10 quick seconds to say, it's great to see some movement there at the Chili's. It's been far too long. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed. The next item on the agenda is Item C. This ordinance, if adopted, would increase the number of A2 liquor licenses, again, within the city, to replace the license vacated by the previous owners of Chef Ping Restaurant at 35, excuse me, at 1755 Algonquin Road. Transfer of ownership always requires the vacating of the liquor license and mandates at obtaining approval of a new license by the new owner. This license is the same class as the previous license. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Veen Bass has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner.
Yes.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed. The next item on the agenda is Item D. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow a freestanding parking garage and other site and building modifications for the property located at 2850 Gulf Road. In addition to permission for the parking structure, the ordinance would provide some relief from standard stormwater requirements, variations to parking space dimensions, as well as the approval of a landscaping replacement plan. The Plan Commission has considered this request and has recommended approval. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Mr. Cannon has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Under discussion, the chair would like to start by gratefully acknowledging the participation of the folks who came this evening. Specifically, Mr. Nathan, I thank you for your gentlemanly recognition that your concerns are not met. Your preference is that something be deferred, but that you understand that the intention of the council is not to go full speed ahead, but to simply try to show the respect to both sides, that this is the only piece that is moving forward at this moment. Ms. Richardson, I also gratefully thank you for your expression of willingness to talk and go over the concerns at that meeting on Thursday. I felt that everybody was talking in a constructive manner, and I believe that due to a quirk of the calendar that gives us three weeks until our next meeting and not the usual two, I believe that the council can take both sides at their face value, and that it is my hope that three weeks will allow enough discussions to happen, that by three weeks' time, everybody can come together as this project moves forward. If that hope is not realized, then we'll have to talk about what needs to be pushed and what maybe needs to go forward, but I don't suspect that three weeks of time would be insufficient for good-hearted parties to come together. Those are my comments. Are there further discussion from the council? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed. The next item on the agenda, and the final item in for second reading, is Item E. This ordinance, if adopted, would redraw the boundaries of the Illinois Route 53 Expressway sign overlay district to include the property located at 1835 to 1951 Rolling Road. The petitioner has requested that the property be included in the overlay district to allow the placement of a double-sided LED billboard. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of give you a feeling for where I'm heading. I'm probably going to be voting against this, and I have two reasons why I'm against it at this point in time. This sign ordinance has been in front of us for a while, and there was some discussions before it became in this form, and one of the things that has concerned me from day one is that part of the premise that we should be approving this is that the landowner will improve his property. To date, I have not seen that landowner in front of us, which concerns me. If he is going to improve the property, and that's the reason why we should approve this, is to give him money to do that, obviously, he has the right to use the money any way he wants if we approve it, but in light of the fact that he's premised this whole thing on, he will improve the property, I've seen nothing from him that would indicate that he's going to improve the property, in fact, with the money he makes off this sign. The other part of that is, one of the other aldermen pointed out to me, it's kind of ironic that this is called the Arlington Office Park in Rolling Meadows. He's asking, he's asking Rolling Meadows for special help, even though he uses Arlington, our neighbor's, name on his office park. Now, that's the first thing that has me not willing to go ahead with this. The second thing is that he's offering to give us $50,000 for our foundation, which is a generous offer, and I appreciate that. The concern I have is that that foundation was set up to be run by individual citizens. To date, that's only run by our city administration. I'm concerned that $50,000 would be going into a fund that we really have no oversight over, and it can be used at their discretion, and there's really no outside input from concerned citizens who should be running this, and for that, those are the two reasons why I'm against this proposal. I really don't have any axe to grind over a sign in itself. I really don't have any strong feelings one way or another, so I just want to make sure you knew what the two reasons were why I'm against this proposal.
The points the gentleman has made are well taken. Further discussion of the ordinance. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
No.
Prina.
Yes.
Judd.
Oh.
Baner.
Yes.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
With three in favor and two opposed, a majority of the council is in support of this ordinance. However, the legal requirement for the final passage of any ordinance is four. That has not been obtained, in part due to the absence of a couple of members of the council. Therefore, the chair will offer a gentle reminder to the council that any motion to reconsider must be made by somebody who votes on the prevailing side, which in this case would be a no.
I can change my vote, Mr. Mayor.
The clerk will please change Mr. Baner's vote to no. Then the vote is two in favor and three opposed. This ordinance is hereby declared failed. However, the possibility to reconsider this motion at our next council meeting, when a full complement of aldermen are here, is a viable possibility at that time. That concludes all of the ordinances that are in for second reading. That leaves the ordinances that are in for first reading, of which there are three, and they are on a consent agenda for ordinances. There are items F, G, and H. Would any alderman like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Judd.
H.
H is removed. Mr. Cannon. G. G. Then there is no consent agenda, and we'll proceed with all the ordinances as they are there. Item F, this ordinance, if adopted, would approve a special use permit for a personal fitness facility to be operated in an M1 zoning district, specifically at 2255 Lois Drive. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Veen Bass has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Veen Bass.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this ordinance forward for second reading. Item G, this ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city code to allow the outdoor sale of used cars under certain conditions. These operations would be limited to certain C2 and M1 zoning districts. This ordinance is also an outcome of the discussion that the council had at a previous committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Veen Bass has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cannon, you asked that this be removed. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I voted previously, I am for this ordinance. As this is going down the line, though, I feel an awful lot of negative vibes relative to this whole subject. It just seems that there's an awful lot of people in our town that are on committees are not for this. That doesn't defer me. I'm confused by that, since this ordinance that we have right now has been on the books since 1982. I would just ask people to be a little open-minded, in, you know, seeing that it's been a long time since this ordinance was originally put in place, that it was time for some changes. Inside that ordinance is one item that I think is unfair to anybody who might be interested in opening up a used car dealership in our town. They put some pretty heavy restrictions on how these people would load and unload their If people are familiar with how cars are delivered by some vehicles, some of those vehicles have a trailer alone that's 53 feet long, plus a cab. So on many properties, they couldn't physically get into them. So if you notice, even if you go over to Woodfield area, where they have major car dealerships with multiple acres, many times you see the cars, the car carriers in the middle of the highway unloading safely, and, you know, backing the cars down off the thing in the kind of an unused area. So I would ask us to reconsider putting that ordinance in there, that they have to get a car carrier onto their own property. The other part of that argument I would also offer is that if it's a safety issue, my contention is, would it be more dangerous to try to get a car carrier into a smaller property? Because then they're going to have to back out somehow, and then they're going to be blocking at least two lanes of traffic, if not more. So if safety is the primary issue of not allowing them load on the street and unload, I would say the counter thing is, it's even more dangerous to have them pull in and then somehow get out, because sometimes the car company might not be allowed to be able to send an employee out to help them direct traffic, to stop it, to get them out, because most of them aren't going to be able to turn around inside, because they can't even do it at major car dealers. So I would ask that Number 19 be stricken from this, and I also, and go along with that, the way it's written up also, that the planning commission would dictate how many, what times of the day they would determine when cars could be delivered or not delivered. That seemed to be an awfully open-ended comment. So I would think that we would want to put ours on there and determine what they would be. Most people would want to get cars delivered while they're there. I don't think they're going to deliver them in the middle of the night. So I guess those are just my comments on it.
Mr. Cannon, is it your intention to propose any amendments this evening, or to wait until the second reading?
Well, I would propose that we get rid of the, Number 19 would either amend it. I don't have actual wording, no, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if you'd just like to strike Number 19, it's as simply stated as that.
Okay, I would do that, then. Thank you.
There is a motion on the floor to strike subsection 19 of section 2. Is there a second to that amendment? Mr. Veen Bass has seconded, therefore, Mr. Cannon, I believe you've kind of already explained the motion, but you are entitled to first comments on the debate on the amendment only, if you wish.
No, I'm just, I'm interested, a lot of people have opinions, but that's, everybody knows where I stand.
Is there further discussion on the amendment only? Mr. Baner. Oh. Mr. Judd.
Well, I'm just glancing in section 1. It looks like 19 is identical.
Identical to what, sir?
19 in section 2.
Oh, all right. Let's go down further.
So page 228, and then 19 is also on page 230. It looks like they're exact same. I was looking at the other one, and you said that one.
That is correct. Therefore, Mr. Cannon, was it your intention to only do one of the two or both?
Well, both.
All right. Then there is a process to amend an amendment, but the chair would simply ask unanimous consent to rephrase the amendment as striking both section 19 in section 1 and section 19 in section 2. Is there any objection to rephrasing the amendment as such? And seeing none, it is so ordered, and the chair, the council returns to discussion of the amendment only to strike subsection 19 of both sections 1 and 2. Mr. Judd, thank you for that observation, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it myself. Further discussion of the amendment only. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to strike subsection 19 of both section 1 and section 2? Let's try a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and both section 19s are stricken from the ordinance. Mr. Cannon, would you... Mr. Cannon, would you care to maybe hang on for second reading after having, having a little bit more sense of what people may say? Or would you care to reserve your potential to make amendments tonight until after other council members have spoken? What's your wish?
I would prefer to wait.
All right. Fair enough. Further discussion on the ordinance? Any part of the ordinance at all is back in fair game. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Cannon, if you have no further wishes until second reading, we can take the vote or if you...
Fine, go ahead.
Fair enough. Then the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll. Judd?
Can I ask just a question? So that amendment is in or not?
The amendment was declared in. Yes, sir.
Okay. It doesn't matter, but I just want to make sure so I know what I'm doing. Yes.
Baner?
No.
Weenboss?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
With three in favor and two opposed, a floating majority is possible for first reading only since second reading is the requirement of four votes. Therefore, the chair declares that the clerk will please move this ordinance forward for second reading. And, Mr. Cannon, you will be free at the second reading to propose any further amendments, knowing which voices are in sympathy with the position you've taken.
Thank you.
That brings the council to item H. This ordinance if adopted would amend the rules and regulations regarding vacation carryover for city employees who are classified under tier 2. Specifically, this ordinance would clear up the problem with the text of the regulations that was identified through the ongoing discussion between the council and the employee advisory committee. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion. Is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Judd, you asked that this item be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just like to make an amendment to section 1 with the table and some of the wording to move it towards a carryover versus accumulation.
Then if I might assist, I am fully ready to discuss this amendment, knowing about it ahead of time, unlike the last item. And so a paper copy of the amendment that Mr. Judd is proposing was placed at every seat for anybody to take a look at. If anybody does have interest from the audience, they were with the agendas. But for reading into the record, it must be phrased appropriately. And the appropriate phrasing of this amendment would strike all of section 1 that follows number 10-37 and insert the words, "The maximum number of vacation hours that an employee may carry over into a new calendar year shall be 40. Any vacation hours to be in excess of the permitted 40 shall be forfeited without pay." That is the proper way to state the amendment. Again, it's a whole lot easier if you just look at the paper. Is there a second to Mr. Judd's amendment? Mr. Cannon has seconded. Therefore, Mr. Judd, if you don't mind, I'll take the liberty of jumping in first just to further explain how this came about.
Sure.
Mr. Judd signaled his intention to make an amendment this evening, which is always appreciated. And so with a limited amount of time, all I did here was make sure that the parliamentary requirements would be met by the idea that Mr. Judd is going to propose in a moment with his comments. I fully admit I am no lawyer and therefore, as far as legal terms go, Mr. McCall may have to do a little tweaking of this over the next couple of weeks before this comes up to second reading. And so the question could fairly be asked, so if maybe there's going to be more wordsmithing that's necessary, then why don't we do all the wordsmithing at one time and not go through the process of an amendment? I believe the correct answer to that question is because Mr. Judd is entitled to that consideration. This ordinance is the only one coming forward out of the discussion between the council and the employee advisory committee. That's not part of the whole package, as we've called it. And the reason why is because all parties have agreed that the impact of words that were previously approved is not the impact that was intended by the council. And quite frankly, only two members of this council can speak to what the council's intentions were. That's Mr. Judd and Mr. Diastis because they were the only ones who were a member of the council at the time. And Mr. Diastis is not present this evening. So as a member of the council, I believe Mr. Judd is entitled to have the wording go forward. It does not close any discussion. There's still two weeks for people to say, well, I really think it should take another form for this reason. But I believe the council version of tie goes to the runner is tie goes to a councilman. And therefore, this ordinance, this amendment is proposed in that fashion at the last minute for that reason. I do appreciate at least being able to try to put something together ahead of time. So thank you for the heads up. And, Mr. Judd, I've explained how it got here, but nothing about the purpose. That's your job. So, Mr. Judd, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The original purpose, back when we originally did this in 2010, was essentially to allow carryover of five days or 40 hours, however you want to look at it. When it was written up, it was written up as maximum accumulation. So basically, after a certain period of time, as Mr. Vogt brought up in the EAC, one of the causes, that employees were basically being forced to take time off so they didn't lose vacation. And we don't mind that on a yearly basis, but they were actually being forced to do it mid-year because of the amount of accumulation. And, you know, the original intent was to allow five days of carryover. That's it, on a yearly basis. And so because of the way this was written up, that doesn't really fall into that. I had conversations with Mr. Crumstock today about it and confirmed, you know, how this would work, but with the maximum accumulation, it actually would allow more than five vacation days to be carried over. So the original intent was for five vacation days. Mr. Vogt brought up, you know, a valid point in the AC, part of the reason we did it, and said, yeah, but that's not what's happening. We all agreed that the wordsmithing needed to be done, but this is what would actually cause the original intent, which was five vacation days to be carried over. So that's where I stand with it. Thank you very much.
Is there further discussion of the amendment only? Mr. Prina, on the amendment?
Just a point of clarification, so...
Certainly.
If employee has 80 hours and they only take 40 hours, they're allowed to take one week accumulation. Is that the intent of the amendment?
It's a little bit more than that. Mr. Crumstock?
Let me just go over the brief description. An employee who is here zero to five years, they would still be getting their 80 hours of vacation. At the end of their annual anniversary date, if they've used 40 days of that 80, 40 is carried over to that next year. Then when they start their next year of anniversary vacation, they could have that 80 plus the 40 that's in the bank. They have 120 in that bank that they could utilize for that next year. But when they come up to their anniversary date, doesn't matter how much is left, their max is 40 hours that they can carry over to that next year. So again, they're still getting their full use of their vacation, their annual anniversary vacation. So it could be the 80 hours, 120 hours, but at the end of their year, their anniversary year, it's that 40 hours that is all that they can carry. So for certain people, it's going to be use it or lose it. And for certain people, it's that word that really became the issue, accumulation, because they were having the issue of, they were here six months and then they stopped at 40 hours and that's where this issue was created. So again, the biggest thing that I can tell you is the carryover is the new wording that we're trying to utilize. That's why the ordinance is shaped a little bit. But again, depending on when a person starts, it's that anniversary year that they have and that's how their years of service go with that year of additional vacation. But it's the 40 hours of carryover, no matter what it is. So I hope that sort of summarized it a little bit easier. So again, their vacation is their vacation. It's the carryover that we're now talking about.
Mr. Prina, is that a sufficient answer to your question?
Yes, so just final clarification. This helps the employee, correct, from what happened before?
All parties believe that it does.
That's the purpose of this.
Yes, sir. The chair will freely admit that there are, there is more than one way to skin a cat, so to speak, and the ordinance that was brought forward is one way to do it. We believe that this is another way that could also accomplish the same goal without doing the same muddying of words that was at the root of the problem to begin with. Is that a sufficient answer to your question?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Further discussion of the amendment only? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be amended to strike all of the words in section 1 after number 10-37 and insert the words, "The maximum number of vacation hours that an employee may carry over into a new calendar year shall be 40. Any vacation hours to be in excess of the permitted 40 shall be forfeited without pay." The question is, shall the ordinance be amended? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is amended. The council returns to discussion of the ordinance in general. Is there further discussion of the ordinance in general? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll. Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this ordinance forward for second reading. That brings the council to the warrant, the document that releases all the funds for the obligations of the city incurred from June 3 through June 16. The amount for approval is nearly $1,125,000, nearly 60% of which is related to the payroll. Is there a motion to approve the warrant as prepared by the finance department? Mr. Weenboss has made the motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion of the warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll. Weenboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings the council to the consent agenda for resolutions. There are five resolutions on the consent agenda. They are items J through N. Would any aldermen like any of those items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Prina?
J.
Item J is removed. Further items to be removed? Mr. Judd?
Larry.
Item L is removed. Further items to be removed from the consent agenda? Then seeing none, the chair asks unanimous consent to consider items K, M, and N as one motion. Is there any objection to doing so? Hearing no objection, it is ordered that therefore a motion to approve items K, M, and N in one motion would be in order. Is there such a motion? Mr. Baner has made the motion and it has been seconded. Item K would approve an indemnification agreement for Ramco Gershenson for the lot use at the June 26, 2015 Wind Down by the Creek event. Item M would also approve an indemnification agreement, but this one for Continental Towers. And item N would award a construction contract for sanitary and sewer pipelining. The question is, shall all three resolutions be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll. Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
The five in favor and none opposed, those three resolutions are adopted. The council then returns to item J. Item J, if approved, would approve a, would approve a four-lot, single-family residential subdivision of the property located at 4,500 to 4,520 Fairfax Avenue. Mr. Prina, you asked that this item be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
First time I've ever asked. The reason I asked for this is this has been in my ward and I've followed this from the very beginning. There were informational meetings from the developer. I've worked with Valerie. I was at the planning commission meeting. There were a lot of concerns. I feel that they have addressed them, so I'm recommending that I would support this tonight. Thank you.
Is there further discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll. Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. The council then returns to item L. Item L, if adopted, would approve an indemnification agreement from Gallagher related to their water drainage issues. Mr. Judd, you asked that this, excuse me, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Mr. Baner has made the motion and it has been seconded. Mr. Judd, you asked that this item be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one quick question and that's for Mr. Crumstock. There was no changes whatsoever, correct? Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll. Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. The council then returns to item L. Item L, if adopted, would approve an indemnification agreement from Gallagher related to their water drainage issues. Mr. Judd, you asked that this, excuse me, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Mr. Baner has made the motion and it has been seconded. Mr. Judd, you asked that this item be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one quick question and that's for Mr. Crumstock. There was no changes whatsoever, correct? Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll. Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Weenboss?
Yes.
The five in favor and none opposed, those three resolutions are adopted. The council then returns to item J. Item J, if approved, would approve a, would approve a four-lot, single-family residential subdivision of the property located at 4,500 to 4,520 Fairfax Avenue. Mr. Prina, you asked that this item be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
First time I've ever asked. The reason I asked for this is this has been in my ward and I've followed this from the very beginning. There were informational meetings from the developer. I've worked with Valerie. I was at the planning commission meeting. There were a lot of concerns. I feel that they have addressed them, so I'm recommending that I would support this
A reminder, vehicle stickers are on sale, and again, they do need to be displayed by June 30. The next city-sponsored blood drive will be conducted this Thursday, June 25, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's actually going to be here on the second floor in the EOC area for that. Then Friday, June 26, we'll have more about this coming up in just a little bit when we do 60th Anniversary Update. But again, Wind Down by the Creek, and it's from 6:00 to 11:00, but it's really, music ends at 10 o'clock that night. But we'll have more on that as it comes up with some samples of, not the drinks, but items, first limited items that we have on there. The Garden Club 2015 Garden Walk, it is going to be this Sunday, June 28, noon to 4:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale at the Community Center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. They can also be purchased online at www.rollingmeadowsgardenclub.com. Friendly reminder that the city's 4th of July parade is scheduled for Saturday, July 4. It starts at 11:30. Remember, it's the alternate year, so we have two different parade routes. This one is the one that goes from the Rolling Meadows High School west onto Central, then to Owl, and then to Kirchoff Road. The other reminder is that also on the 4th of July, we will be conducting the fireworks, and that is at around 9:15 dusk at Salt Park. The other item that I want to mention is, and that's all related to the 4th of July holiday weekend, is that Friday, July 3, City Hall and Public Works will be closed in observance of the 4th of July holiday. However, regular refuse collection will be done on Friday. The 8th Annual Duck Race will be held on Friday, August 7. This year's race, still sponsored by the city's Environmental Committee, the Rotary Club of Rolling Meadows, and the Rolling Meadows Park District Foundation, is scheduled to be held at the Nelson Sports Complex Pool. Starts at 7:00 p.m. Only $5 per duck, or you can do a quack pack, and it's five ducks for $20. And obviously, for June, the E News and Views can be found on the city website. Please visit www.ciderm.org and click to News and Views tab. Obviously, because it's the end of the month, we're tracing what other meetings are coming up for the main other committees. Economic Development is actually going to be moving to Tuesday, July 14 at 6:00 p.m. So, they will be meeting before the City Council meeting. And tentative items, discussion deal with the Economic Development Consultant, Mike Mellon will be here. 2850 Gulf Road Project, Lexington Homes, business updates and other items of interest for the city. But on Tuesday, July 7 at 7:30, the Plan Commission still will be meeting. They have one tentative item for public hearing, and this consists of the special use permit, sign appeal, and amendment to the plan unit development for the drive-through bank facility located at 3148 Kirchoff Road. The petitioner is Ben Franklin Bank of Illinois. And just for clarification on that, Ben Franklin is actually in the shopping mall right now. They're just coming to that end cap where the post office was because they actually are looking for a drive-through. So, it's not a new bank. They're already in the city. And then zoning board will be meeting on Wednesday, July 8. And then, again, that's a different date than they would usually be meeting, but that's at 7:30 p.m. here at the Council Chambers. They actually have two items that will be discussed in hearings. And scheduled are variance to Chapter 18 of the Building Code of Property, commonly known as 2851 Gulf, excuse me, Brockway Street. The petitioner and owner is Vitus and Jessica Kukas. And the second item that they will have is a variance to the side rear here to allow the construction of the shed in the property, commonly known as 3831 Birdneck Street. The petitioner and owner is Thomas P. Lazarus. The item that I do want to add for tonight is just to mention, obviously, with all the tornadoes that we had down south, or south from us, we did have two individuals from the Fire Department who did get deployed. They did go to Woodhaven Lake Resort Community, and that is right by Sublet, Illinois, in Lee County. They were part of the search urban rescue team from the Mavis Group, and they've been down there, and hopefully, they will be coming back tomorrow. And it's also part of the Mavis call-out, we actually had one other person who was deployed to the readiness center, actually in Wheeling, and that person did about a day of additional service for that. So, again, we do greatly appreciate when our individuals go out and help other communities when there are disasters. And again, these three individuals stepped up and they did go out to service. And with that, those are the items of interest for this time.
Then the next item would be the new business report. Also, Mr. Crumstock?
You know, just two that I want to mention out of four. And again, this is the May new business list. And I do want to make the market service one at 1701 Gulf Road, Tower 3. And again, it's non-line data service, but what's also happening and why I want to mention this one is that it all deals with 1701 Gulf Road. Continental Towers is under a big remodeling. They are putting their parking garage in landscaping, and one of their other towers will be filled pretty soon with a major corporation that is moving in too. We've mentioned it in the past, but until they're all in and their permits are in there too. But again, when they're done with their remodeling and also with this other corporation moving in, more than 75, close to 90 percent of the towers will be really occupied, and that's really a great news for everything that's going on. The other one that I want to mention, because residents have asked numerous times, is that Pizza Ready is almost ready to open. I didn't mean that in that kind of way. But they're at 2222 Algonquin Road, and again, that's just another area. That was something that they were open at one point, the new owners, and now they've finished up some construction. But again, that's Pizza Ready at 2222 Algonquin Road. With that, those are the four items for our new businesses of May.
Then the next item is the fireworks safety message. Chief for Insgro, based on what I was hearing out my back fence over the weekend, maybe in future years, we want to move this up to the first meeting in June rather than the second meeting in June, but the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. It is the season. That's correct. But as we approach the Independence Day holiday, staff would like to remind everyone that fireworks are dangerous, not only for those who handle them, but also for those around them. According to the Illinois Office of the State Fire Marshal, bystanders account for roughly 17 percent of fireworks injury accidents. Stray sparks start fires. They burn bystanders and cause damage. This is especially true when handling banned or professional-grade fireworks or when those using fireworks are intoxicated. Participants and bystanders alike get hurt, which is why the National Fire Protection Association, the Illinois Office of the State Fire Marshal, and the Rolling Meadows Fire Department strongly oppose the use of consumer fireworks and encourage people to enjoy public displays of fireworks provided by professional pyrotechnicians who must adhere to strict laws and safety standards. So, please have a safe and happy 4th of July holiday.
Next item under Staff Reports then is the 60th Anniversary Update. Ms. Sezak?
Thank you, Mayor Ruby. I'm Stacey House.
Hey, welcome.
This Friday evening on June 26, a new outdoor event will take place at Kimball Hill Park. Live music will play throughout the evening, featuring Denny Diamond and the Jewels and Field Day. Local beer and wine will be available for purchase from Bigby's Porthouse and Lindfred Winery, and these fun commemorative glasses. There will also be a wide variety of food trucks on site to satisfy all tastes. This special event is called Wind Down by the Creek, and will start at 6:00 p.m. with the music ending at 10:00. We want to thank the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce and the Park District for teaming up with the city to bring this exciting event to our community. So, bring your lawn chair and join us for an evening of music in our beautiful park. Another special event will take place on Saturday, July 18, behind the Community Center in the parking lot at 3705 Pheasant Drive. The Park District and the city have once again teamed up to host a special parking lot party with loads of family-friendly activities offered, such as a dunk tank, bouncy house, magician, photo booth, water balloon toss, and many other fun surprises. This event starts at 3:00 p.m. Later that evening at 7:00, a high-energy rock band named Sushi Roll will take the stage and thrill all ages. A wide variety of food trucks will be available, and families will have the option of reserving their own patio space to B-Y-O-B and grill out or just hang out. Grilling will only be allowed with a pre-reserved space. For more information, please contact the Rolling Meadows Park District at 818-3200. Other events for the 2015 year, 60th year, tentatively include Saturday, August 29, an ice cream social at Waverly Park located at 2202 Oak Lane. And then Thursday, jumping ahead, Thursday, December 3, the annual tree lighting in front of the McDonald's on Kirchoff Road will happen, and this year, it will be spiced up with fireworks and a complimentary spaghetti dinner at the old fire station. We also have exciting Celebrate 60 items for sale that can be purchased at City Hall and at different events. Currently, they consist of coffee mugs, coasters, and garden flags. Stay in touch with the city website and community news and views for more updates on the 60th Anniversary events throughout the year. Finally, we'd like to put out a special thank you to everyone who helped out at the very successful Friday, June 19 Black Party, with honorable mentions to our special sponsors and organizers. Meadows Christian Fellowship Church, Community Church, Rick and Donna Cece from Suburban Accents, BMO Bank, and the Rolling Meadows Police Department. Thank you.
Well, I suppose I'm going to have to let the cat out of the bag sometime. I'm doing my best to hit everything from the 60th Anniversary Committee, but on that date of the parking lot party, it starts at 3:00, but the celebration of my first anniversary starts at 1:20. So, sorry, I'm not going to be there for that one.
You will be missed.
Then the next item under City Staff Reports is the Staff Traffic Advisory Report. Mr. Vogt?
Dear Mayor, the June meeting was held on the 10th. Just a few items to highlight from that meeting. We're looking forward to the high school with the bus lane construction to Oak Lane that is to take place this summer. Secondly, Industrial Avenue Bike Lane, which was previously discussed. We will have Public Works do the striping and signage per the city engineer's design. Also this summer, we will continue to work with the school zone signages. We've been reviewing plans for Plum Grove Junior High area and Carl Sandburg area. We intend to have all these completed by the end of the summer before school starts. Borough Court, we received a request from residents regarding the children at play sign, even though that's a cul-de-sac. We don't see any harm in that as a committee, so that installation will proceed. Lastly, we received a request for additional street lighting on Swallow Lane, and this is something that the Traffic Review Committee has not reviewed in the past, but we felt it a good start. Talked to the Police Department about any unusual situations there, which there aren't any that we're aware of at this point. So, our intent is to push this to the Street Lighting Ad-Hoc Committee for future meeting and discussion once we get our standards in place, and that will hopefully come to, back to City Council Committee later this summer. So, that's the report for this month.
Then the final item under City Staff Reports is the Purchase Order Disclosures over $2,500. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three purchase orders for review by the City Council.
Then concluding the other business and reports section of the agenda, are there matters not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no matters not on the agenda, it would be in order for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It was quick. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.[1779.33]